I'd like to call the Lancaster School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I'd ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silent reflection.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic where which is stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So every year, I'd like to just explain what we're doing. It's a little different, only on this board meeting. This is the Board of Education's reorganization meeting, which means that in essence, the board takes an opportunity in the very beginning and throughout the course of the first part of this evening to reorganize, whether it's choosing law firms or architect firms, those kind of things, and solidifying some of its agreements and protocol moving forward for the next school year. So in essence, it's a transfer of people and reorganization of the school district, Board of Education and their business. So the first point here is 4.1, the superintendent, administration of oath to myself, and then we'll do the newly elected board members, and then the Board of Education itself. Next, 4.2, administration of oath and newly elected board members, Kevin Davenport and John Tellerico. Don't be shy. You can come right up, stand right here if you'd like.
Aye.
Right ahead.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Board according to the best of my knowledge.
Next, what will happen is there will be 5.1 or 5.0, the election of officers. 5.1 is the president of the Board of Education for the 2019-2020 school year. After this, the elected Board of Education president will take control of the meeting as he or she always does, and there'll be some movement and jockeying here as far as seats. So just bear with us for a few minutes. So 5.1, the president of the Board of Education for the 2019-20 school year, do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Utech.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations, Mr. Utech. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have 5.2, vice president of the board. I'd like to nominate Michael Sage. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Congratulations, Mr. Sage. So 5.3, we'll administer the oath to myself and Mr. Sage.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my knowledge.
Let's see. So thank you for coming, everyone, tonight, and I thank you fellow board members for nominating me for president once again. I'm humbled by your support and your trust, and I'll work hard to live up to that. And Mr. Sage, I think you're, I'm happy to have you working with me and with Dr. Valli as well. Now, before we continue, new board members, Kevin Davenport, John Tellerico, do you want to have family pictures or anything so that your daughter, I know your daughter was going to retire? Sure. Yeah, where did Juliana go? She left. Did they go home? Perfect. Did they leave? Should do a body. Okay. All right. Put that in the record, please. So as soon as she comes back in, we'll stop, we'll take a photo, and then we'll... Thank you. Yeah, my pleasure. Sure, yeah, let's do that. So the new seating arrangement will be, Mr. Sage, you'll be here, and then Mr. Jackson, you're going to move down, Mrs. Cohen's going to move down, Mrs. Fetter will move down, and then we had Mr. Tellerico was on this side, and Mr. Davenport. So you're going to sit in Mrs. Fetter's seat. So Mr. Tellerico, you'll be in Shannon's seat, yeah? So before we move forward with the appointment of the officers, so the seating arrangement is basically that we've sort of developed a tradition or precedent, I guess, where the vice president would sit to the right of the president, and then on the ends of the seating arrangement would be the new members, and therefore, and the reason behind that is we wouldn't seat you together because you're going to learn from the people who are next to you. Mr. Tellerico, you're lucky enough to sit between Mrs. Cohen and Mrs. Phillips, who's a wealth of knowledge, and then you have Dr. Kufel there and Mrs. Fetter, who are, who will help you with everything you need. So good luck, you're in a good position. So 6.0 would be the appointment of officers, and this is without additional remuneration. We'll start with 6.1, the clerk of the board, Mrs. Sandy Janik. So Mrs. Janik, do you take the oath right now, or so you take it with me, and then the rest of them have been, or will be administered the oath in the district office after, right? So 6.2 is our district treasurer, Carol Peck. 6.3 is our deputy treasurer, Beth Albrecht. 6.4, our tax collectors. 6.5, our internal claims auditor, which is Erie One Boses. 6.6, the clerk of the board pro team, Lisa Panara. And 6.7, those oaths will be taken in the district office. 7.0, we have the official undertakings, all the bonding limits. So as we move forth with our reorganization agenda, we have several subheadings here which we will read off for the record and for anyone watching at home, and then we'll approve those at the end of each of those categories. So could I have a motion to accept the bonding limits? So moved. Just a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 8.0 are all of our designations, and this is where we establish various dates, bank depositories, official newspapers, and so on. 8.1 is the establishment of dates of our regular meetings. 8.2 is the approval of our 2020-2021 budget calendar. 8.3 is our official bank depository. 8.4, our official newspapers, the Lancaster Bee and the DePue Bee. 8.5, our official television stations, Spectrum, and 8.6, our official radio stations are WBEN, WXRL, and WGR. Could I have a motion to accept those designations?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. We have a very important visitor who has just re-arrived, so we're going to pause right now and get a picture or two. Kevin, and then if you and John want to stand, if you and John would stand and Pat, if you could take a picture, yeah? Okay, 9.0, we have authorizations. 9.1 is to authorize the designation of signatures on all school district checks with signature plates, Carol Peck and Beth Albrecht. 9.2 is authorize submission of bid notices as needed to local newspapers, that's Jamie Phillips. 9.3 is to authorize the district clerk to open bids at the time and place advertise on behalf of the board, in her absence, the assistant superintendent for business and support services, or her designated representative will perform this duty. 9.4, the authorization to establish petty fund, or petty cash funds. 9.5, the authorization of payment of bills in advance of board approval upon approval of the warrant by the internal claims auditor. 9.6, authorize the chief school administrator or his designate to approve attendance and payment of expenses of board members and staff at meetings or conferences in advance of board approval, within the limits approved by the board and the current budget and within provisions of existing board policy. 9.7, authorize the prior approval of temporary cash advances from the general fund to the federal aid fund. Warrants for both the general fund and the federal fund, the general fund and the federal fund will list each advance, general fund when it is given and federal fund when it is paid back. 9.8, authorize participation in Boses cooperative bids. 9.9, authorize purchasing based on best value. 9.10, authorize purchasing through cooperative purchasing organizations. 9.11, authorization to accept donations of funds for the provision of field trip services and use of the district buildings, that's Jamie Phillips. Authorize the use of credit cards is 9.12. 9.13, authorize the hourly rate for off-duty security officers at $29 per hour. 9.14, authorize Jamie Phillips to certify the district's payroll. 9.15, authorize processing of all budget transfers on chief's school officials' approval per attached policy 5140. 9.16, authorize the superintendent to apply for grants and aid, both state and federal. 9.17, authorize payment to non-Lancaster Central Teachers Association members who perform Schedule D and E duties at Schedule D and E rates per the current LCTA bargaining agreement. 9.18, authorize the superintendent to approve contracts under $2,500. 9.19, authorize the superintendent to approve bond issue change orders in amounts less than $35,000 prior to board approval. And 9.20, authorize policy for free and reduced price meals and free milk. Could I have a motion to accept those authorizations?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 10.0, other annual appointments. 10.1 is to appoint agents for the board to oversee the investment of temporary idle district funds, that's Jamie Phillips and Carol Peck. 10.2, appoint the deputy treasurer of extra class activities accounts, that's Beth Albrecht. 10.3, appoint the purchasing agent, that's Jamie Phillips. 10.4, the ECASB team appointments. And that's, we start now to look at board members who will serve as team members for the Erie County Association of School Boards. Okay, so first, we have the delegate assembly, and then we have the budget and finance team and the legislative team. Last year, Mrs. Cohen was on the, for the delegate assembly, and Mrs. Metz was her alternate. Budget and finance team, Mr. Gallagher. I was the alternate, and the legislative team was Mrs. Fetter with Mrs. Cohen as her alternate. Would you like to continue to serve in that?
Aye.
Okay. And Mrs. Fetter? On the legislative team?
Actually, I wanted to say for that, they typically met one after the other, and Shannon actually served as the alternate a few times for me because I wasn't able to make it due to work or something, and I think that they, like, the legislative team would meet for an hour, and then I would go right into the delegate assembly, so it would make sense to have the same person if you are interested. I mean, I'm not trying to volunteer you, but I, but I think it just makes sense because a lot of what they talk about in the legislative committee ends up informing the delegate assembly, and so it doesn't really make sense to have two different people do those things.
And we'll, you know, if you take on that double duty, we'll alleviate you, or Mr. Jackson will alleviate you of something else down the road.
I can, I can back for that.
Sure. You want to, you want to? So Mrs. Fetter, did you want to be the alternate on both of those, or did you want to start something new?
I'd like to do something.
Sure. Okay, Mr. Jackson, you want to be the alternate for both of those, huh?
I'll, yeah, I'll be that.
Okay. And how about the budget and finance team? That's assisting with the budget development, review of membership dues, structure. Does anyone have any interest in that? It sounds fascinatingly exciting, of course, but...
I'm not going to know.
So they meet three times per year.
I would do that. I'd take off the audit.
What's that?
I would step off the audit. Easy budget.
Okay. Yeah, I'll stay on the audit team, just to have some consistency then. Okay, so Mr. Jackson, and then, Mr. Sage, you want to be the alternate for that one?
I'll do the alternate.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. The New York State School Board Association, or NISBA, the first is the voting delegate, and then we have the NISBA liaison, and that person can really serve in both roles. I know we had Mrs. Cohen was the voting delegate last year, and Mrs. Fetter was the And normally, we have a new board member serve as the voting delegate. So Mr. Davenport or Mr. Tellerico, would you like to? Yeah, I can do that one, that's fine. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, it's during the NISBA convention where they come up with resolutions from across the state, so you do get to take part in hearing what other people from different school boards around the state have to say and what's important to them, so it's a very informative role. So Mr. Tellerico will be the voting delegate, and Mr. Davenport, would you like to be the alternate?
Sure.
And Mr. Tellerico, would you like to be the liaison for NISBA as well?
Sure.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, now we move to our district committees. The audit committee last year was myself, Mr. Jackson, and Mr. Gallagher. I'll continue on the audit committee to maintain some consistency. Mr. Jackson's going to pick up some other roles. Who else? We need two other people who would like to serve on the audit committee, and that's to meet with the district auditors. Mr. Davenport? Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. I can do that one. And Mr. Sage. Very good. Did anyone really want to be on that one, and would want to fight these guys, that we could vote? Okay. Okay. Not to make light of these, I'm just trying to have a little fun, these are very important committees, and our auditors do inform us of the very important work that they do. So, but thank you for your participation, Mr. Davenport and Mr. Sage. Food service committee, last year, that was Mrs. Cohen and Mrs. Metz. They meet five, six times a year?
Two or three.
Two or three? Okay. Have you been on that one before?
No. Well, just this year, and I would actually like to go over building use.
Building use? Okay. Yeah. I would serve on the food service committee, I've done that in the past, and I'd be happy to do that. Would anyone like to join me? Mr. Davenport, thank you. This is, I mean, this is a good, that's a very informative, they're all very informative. It's just, it's more meetings, which I understand, but Mr. Davenport, thank you very much. Mrs. Fetter, I'm going to keep looking over your way.
Well, I understand my other two.
I know, I'm just using. So, okay, so next, we have, so that'll be myself and Mr. Davenport. Next, we have our building use committee, which Mrs. Cohen said she'd like to do. Anyone else?
Was I on that one last year?
No, last year, that was, oh, yeah, Mike Sage and Sumax.
Would we cancel them?
Oh, that's right.
So it's maybe a good one for when we don't have.
I'll stay.
All right. So Mrs. Cohen and Mr. Sage. And then we have our health insurance committee, and Miss Fetter's going to stay on that one. Would anyone like to join her on the health insurance? Mr. Tellerico, thank you. And then we have our district-wide health and safety committee, and last year, that was Mrs. Fetter. Are you going to stay on that one? Very good. Would you like to be the alternate for that, Mr. Tellerico?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That takes care of all of our committees and our, right? Okay. Very good. Thank you, everyone. And I guess to really sort of summarize, the reason for us being on those committees is our continued oversight of the work that goes on within the district and also related to the health and welfare of our district and its students. And then board members come back and inform the rest of the board and the community about the ongoings of the district and those entities that are affiliated with us in one, in a direct or indirect way. So thank you for that work and those, that volunteering. So 10.5, appoint audit committee members. 10.6, we covered. 10.7, 10.8, 10.9, 10. 10.10 is to appoint the school physician and approve the contract with Lancaster to Pew Pediatrics. Could I have a motion to accept that appointment and contract?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Oh, we continue, okay, so we'll lump these as well. So 10.11, appoint chief dental officer, Brennan Brennan. 10.12 is appoint Acustar workplace compliance for employee physicals and approve their contract. 10.13 is to appoint members of the committee on special education, the committee on preschool, special education, and impartial hearing officers. 10.14 is to appoint the fire code inspector, George Peace. 10.15, appoint the independent auditor for the period beginning July 1st, 2019 through July, through June 30th, 2020, and that's Drescher and Malecki. 10.16, appoint risk assessment and testing services, that's Freed and Maxick. 10.17, appoint the school attorney, Harris Beach. 10.18, appoint Bengart and DiMarco. LLP is additional district legal counsel for tax surchargeary proceedings as needed. 10.19, appoint a vestis designee, that's Michael Brinyarsky. 10.20, appoint insurance broker, Evans Insurance, Evans Agency Insurance. 10.21, appoint records management officer, that's Jamie Phillips. 10.22, appoint, appointing officer for civil service functions, that's Jamie Phillips. 10.23, appoint the chief emergency officer, that's Jamie Phillips. 10.24, appoint the financial advisor and approve the contract with Capital Markets Advisors. 10.25 is to appoint the residency hearing officer, that's Dr. Valli. 10.26, appoint Title IX officers, Michelle Ziegler, Andrew Kufel, Jamie Phillips, Andrew Krazmian, and Karen Marchioli. 10.27, appoint the census numerator, it's Andy Kufel. 10.28, appoint the school resource officers as our law enforcement unit. 10.29, appoint the supervisor of attendance, that's Dr. Kufel. 10.30, appoint records access officer, that's Jamie Phillips. 10.31, appoint the liaison for homeless children and youth, that's Sandy Camerata. 10.32, appoint the director of communications, that's Pat Bergio. 10.33, appoint the chemical hygiene officer, that's Clifford Trapper and Stacy Lauk. 10.34, appoint the designated education officer, or DEO, to receive court notification regarding a student's sentence adjudication in certain criminal cases and juvenile delinquency proceedings, that's Dr. Valli. 10.35, appoint the school pesticide representative, that's Michael Brinyarsky. 10.36, appoint reviewing official, hearing official, and verification official for the participation in federal child nutrition program. Reviewing official, Tammy Augliero. Hearing official, Jamie Phillips, and verification official, Tammy Augliero as well. 10.37, appoint post-issuance federal tax requirement compliance monitoring, that's Jamie Phillips. 10.38, appoint the board president and/or the vice president to appoint an impartial hearing officer per board policy 7670. 10.39, appoint assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and pupil personnel services to make all residency determinations. And 10.40, appoint the district-wide school safety team. Could I have a motion to accept those appointments?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.0, or other items. 11.1 is to establish the conference reimbursement rates for meals and a maximum of $66 per day with receipts. 11.2 is re-adoption of all policies and code of ethics in effect during our previous school year. And 11.3, establish mileage reimbursement rate according to the IRS-approved rate currently at 58 cents per mile. Could I have a motion to accept those items?
So moved. Second.
And questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Okay. Thank you for your patience, everyone. 12.0, we have a presentation of the LAUDI system versus valedictorian saludictorian, and to introduce our students, Mr. Marchioli is here to welcome back, I guess you could say, Ryan O'Hara and Casey Voight. Thank you for coming, to both of you, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Marchioli.
Awesome. Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce our outgoing student union president and vice president, Ryan O'Hara and Casey Voight. They are going to present to you some of the things that have been going on for a couple years with student presentations on switching maybe to the LAUDA system that some other schools are doing. I don't want to instill any of the thunder, so I'm going to turn it over to them, but I just wanted to comment on the fact that they did graduate a couple weeks ago, and here they are. So they're still committed to this, and I think that they should be congratulated for that. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
Hello, my name's Casey Voight, and this is Ryan O'Hara. We both just graduated, like Mr. Marchioli just mentioned. We are going to be discussing switching from class rank to the LAUDA system. So a little history, Connor Caro and Lauren Budzik, I don't know how to say her last name, which, they both are past Lancaster gr-. I don't know how to say her last name, which, they both are past Lancaster graduates. They basically started the discussion on class rank and switching it to LAUDA. This began as a discussion at an SSAC meeting as far back as 2015. Connor passed his research on to us after he graduated to keep the discussion going and hopefully to see some change in how our schools rank students.
So, what is it? It's a Latin honor system that recognizes academic honors in graduates. It combines honor points with GPAs. Why make the change? College admissions don't really consider class rank as a significant factor anymore when students are applying to college. And it will cause colleges to look beyond rank and take a closer look at students' full body of work, including extracurricular activities.
All right, so, um, we aren't the first school district to bring this up. So, as you can see, Williamsville, actually, I believe their first graduating class, if that's not correct, is going to be graduating using LAUDA. But they started it back in 2017. So, yes, other local districts may have been looking into that also, but, um, across the country, there's a lot of school districts switching over. And it's actually estimated that almost 60% of schools have switched over across the country. That's high schools. So, um, LAUDA ranks, um, so our thought in this is really, instead of pitting students against each other for 10,000, 1,000, 100th of a point, instead, we should be recognizing all of the outstanding academ- academic efforts. So, basically, how it would work is the ranking would start at summa cum laude, would be the highest, um, which is the top 10%. The next 10% would be magna cum laude, and the next 10% after that would be cum laude. And, um, a piece that we could always open it up to would be subjective, would be a volunteer process. If somebody fell slightly below any of these categories, it's possible that we can use volunteer service to bring them up. That's obviously subjective and we can always look into that further. So, um, when applying LAUDA to Lancaster specifically, um, our class was 446 students. So, just to give you an example, um, for summa, there would be approximately 44 people. The next group would be the next 44 people, and after that, the next 44 people. So, approximately 122 people would be ranked in this. So, it's not, um, some people look at it as giving everybody a ribbon, and it's not, because it's only 44 per category. Um, and again, the point, the points of their GPA are so close that it's not, it's not, you know, it's still making it fair. So, um, and then, if you do not fall into one of these categories, you simply aren't marked in the category. You, you still have your GPA, obviously. But then, we hope that when it comes to publicity of it, um, when it's put in the B and all that kind of stuff, um, that people aren't looking at their name at the bottom of the list. Instead, they see that they're made in one of the top three groups. And their goal, if they don't make it in one of those groups, is to make it in one of those groups, not be put in a list of numbers. So, um, again, that's just another example. Say there were 472 students, that's how that outlook would kind of be. It would, it would be more people, 142 students. But again, as long as the number ranges somewhere around there, that's what we'd be looking at. So, just a question is, if we're striving for college readiness, shouldn't our ranking reflect that of a college? So, many colleges do use the LAUDA system, so it would be nice to bridge the gap from high school to college.
Yes. Dr. Kufel, my question is, um, so if I think of, um, summa is the highest. Yes. What would the, guess, the GPA is 47? Yeah, but if you had to guess the bottom of that, so it's 1 to 47, and it's up to your class, what do you think the GPA of that 47 would be?
47, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would always think the same question, there's the COGS for each of the.
Yeah. Yeah, just to, just to give you an idea, what do you mean? That's still, there's such a, it's still, it's close to that, right? Off of that, um, so it's, it's just something for context.
It's still gonna be, even, even going down to cum laude, you have to say it's still pretty high. So, I mean, I, I think it's important to recognize that this is a somewhat flexible system. As are the appointments or, uh, two of the designations based on your extracurricular. So, people will allow them to cut off, uh, just one, right? But think about the cutoff between 10 and 11, or the cutoff between 1 and 2, because I know that's a fraction of the points, right? There's always going to be those days there, correct? Our system right now, seemingly, more days there because of how specific it is, right? And how one given. And I, I see the appeal of more inclusive, defined class ranking, if you will, that does reflect what colleges do, right? And we're still recognizing, with a nice designation, the top 30%, right? So, that's, that's still a pretty elite group, so, um, yeah, I told you today, I was looking forward to learning more about this process. And that's what we're doing right now, we're starting the process. And I love the fact that it's coming from students, uh, and two students who have already graduated, and they still have a vested interest in, in their alma mater, which many people who leave Lancaster still love this place and want to do what's best for us as an institution, but more importantly, for their fellow classmates. I appreciate the information very much.
So, do you guys think there's some stress, you know, in, so that, say you're, you know, shooting for the top three, you know, and you're like a 10th of 1% away from that other person. Do you think there's a lot of stress on that?
Yeah, I think there is a lot of stress, um, especially, um, when it comes to people that put themselves out there, they join a lot of groups. And then you have certain people that may focus only on education, which is totally fine, but then, you know, they might have a higher average because they're dedicating themselves more. So, they're stressing themselves to the max, but you also have people stressing themselves with extracurriculars and education, but aren't, you know, looked at as high of, you know, stature because, you know, they're still, they're still close, but, you know, they're not as high as those overachievers, I guess you could say. Not in a bad way. No, no negative connotation on that.
Thanks, guys.
So, so said differently, if I sent you back to freshman year, if we sent you back, would it motivate you to do some other things or try some other things versus focusing so, so much on academics? Maybe push outside your sort of comfort zones?
Definitely, for sure. I think, well, for me personally, freshman year, I was so worried about my grades. And then senior year, I'm like, why did I spend so much time freshman year worrying about that? Like, senior year really opened my eyes. Like, it wasn't about grades. It's about having fun, making memories, while also being academically successful, of course. But I definitely would have gotten more involved freshman year if I wasn't so worried about, like, getting a certain rank.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if, like, going back to freshman year, um, obviously, we did apply ourselves, but at the same time, maybe the stress level wouldn't be there as much, because we'd still be recognized in, um, most likely, one of the to- top three categories for LAUDA, but we wouldn't be looked at as a number. So, I think that definitely would alleviate that stress.
So, does this change, um, the ranking for, like, honor roll versus high honor roll? Because I, you know, you see those lists as well. So, would it, would it replace that? Like, who made the high honor roll this quarter, that kind of thing?
So, yes, so in the B, usually, it's listed in order of ranking. But, we don't really know the specifics, but I think with this system, it would be ordered with each, um, like, category, do you know what I mean?
Alphabetical or something?
Yeah, I think alphabetical for sure, because then you still know you're number one if it's ordered like that.
What about, so what would factor into it besides the grade point average?
Right, so, honors points are, can either be added or multiplied. We haven't figured out the formula that we're gonna use yet, but the honors points, basically, it's up to us as a district what we want to include as honors points. But some examples, we could include academy classes, like Leadership in Action, or Project Lead the Way classes, APs, honors classes, maybe foreign language. Basically, any class that we feel is already weighted or students should deserve an honors point for that, like, an extra, an extra something.
Yeah, so also with that, so honors classes, again, would probably get less pointage, I guess you could say, and then AP classes would get higher. We would have to figure out where the, um, academy classes fall into that. But what we're trying to do is not punish those for taking AP classes or not taking them, but also, like, allowing people to take a lunch in their day, because that way, they don't have to worry about their GPA as much, you know? So, it's, it's just that kind of thing, alleviating the stress, but at the same time, making sure that those who do want to take those higher classes don't get punished for that.
Sorry, I have another question.
Sure.
So, you, you talked about how colleges don't look at rank as much anymore. Did you talk to different college admissions, or, like, how did you get that information? And, um, and what did, you know, if they're kind of switching to this, if it's not a standardized system across different things, like, how did they see it? You know, if any school can just be like, "Well, you know, all these kids are sum laude and, you know..."
Right.
"All of our kids are great." How did they determine that they really?
Um, one of the thing, one of the pamphlets that Connor gave me was a brochure from a school district, Piner Falls, I'm pretty sure it is. And, uh, in that pamphlet, I could have printed it, but, do you want to pull it up on my phone? It has numbers, um, colli- it has, like, statistics of colleges and how much they weigh, class rank versus other, um, sorry.
Okay, so basically, through research, we saw that they stated that they weren't stressing it as much, because some schools are bigger than others. So, where you're ranked, say you're number three in a class of 400 compared to a three in a class of 20 is very different. So, the LAUDA system actually is percentages. So, it would, it would stress more percentage-wise opposed to, like, an actual number. So, if you're in a class of 400, um, being in summa, um, you'll, obviously, again, 44 people. If it was a class of 20, it would be a lot less people in there. So, it's, they're almost not looking at rank anymore. But if you are looked at as percentage-wise of your school, um, you're, you're thrown into that. If you, they're also looking at extracurriculars way more than they used to. So, just through research, we didn't specifically talk to anybody, but if you wanna...
So, this is from 2011, so it's not really that recent, but, um, I'm sure it's changed a bit. About 31% of school or colleges rate class rank as a moderate importance, 31.4 rated as limited importance, and 18.8% rated as not important at all, if that helps.
All right, knowing that, um, this is research that, that's been going on since, what, 2015? You guys have just graduated, are you handing this torch over to members of the incoming senior class to continue the work?
Yes. So, through SSAC, um, the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, um, we do bring that up. There's a, a subcommittee, so we'd like to pass that on to them. And then, of course, Mr. Marchioli and the counseling office would have to come up also with a plan of action on, again, the weighting of it and, you know, because the counseling center, we want them to, we want to make it as easy on them as we can, because they're the ones that are gonna be doing the math. So, um, yeah, we'll definitely have to work with them, but passing it down, giving them help from student leaders is definitely what we're trying to do.
And, Ryan or Casey, I know, we talked a little bit about, um, how this would come into effect, the transition, um, who it would affect, um, just looking down the road, because there is more, there are a lot more wrinkles to be ironed out and details to uncover and put a formula together. But what would be the ideal rollout of something like this if we did decide to go in this, in this direction?
Do you mean, so like, it would, if, if this did pass and we got support for it, we would start with 7th graders at the middle school right now? Um, so when they get up to the high school, um, they know the LAUDA system. We don't want to punish anybody that's already in their class rank and we don't want to, you know, ruffle any feathers. But, so anybody that's in class rank won't be taken out of it. 7th graders will simply be put into the LAUDA system. So, we will have two systems happening at once, but we feel that's the only way to almost throw it.
Sure.
Throw it in. So, once that happens, um, like, is there anything else you?
No, that's, that's what I wanted you to just elaborate upon, because it made perfectly good sense to me.
Right.
And in the interest of fairness and the interest of, of covering those bases for not taking someone out of class rank, right? We wouldn't want to do that.
Right.
I, I appreciate that you're looking ahead like that and you have, you know, some forethought with that, because if this was to move forward, um, we want to make it as easy a transition as possible, right? So, um, yeah, thank you.
So, you guys thought you graduated already, huh?
Yeah.
This is the hardest test you've had probably throughout your entire career. So, yeah, I, I, you mentioned 7th grade, like, I mean, they, they don't even really think about rank yet. They're thinking of, like, honors and high honors, which, which more aligns and better aligns with this already. So, I think that makes perfect sense, and I don't know what the next steps would be and if there's a vote or something else that, that, you know, that the students undertake, but, uh...
By 8th grade, they kind of have a sense.
Yeah. It's, it sounds like a good plan. I don't, I don't know what the next steps are, but good work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want, do you want to elaborate at all? Do you want to?
Yeah, one more thing, um, ideally, if, again, if we got support for that, we wouldn't have valedictorian-saludictorian, um, but we would, this is, again, this is all, you know, just a thinking process. We would have two people, um, from summa cum laude speak at graduation. Um, so again, that's the highest, um, group. And what it would be is kind of how we have this, a different senior class member speak at graduation. Everybody would submit speeches if they wanted to in summa. And, um, there would be a panel, I don't know who the panel would be, that would look at those speeches anonymously, there would be no names on them. And then, the two best speeches would be able to speak, because not, the valedictorian-saludictorian aren't always the best speakers. They are the smartest, I guess you could say. But I think if you're still in that top 10%, um, I don't think anybody would have a problem with you representing your class, so.
Does anyone else from the board have anything they'd like to ask, or?
Have you reached out to what was Williamsville North? To see how they, what they did with their transition plan? How they set up their, um, ranking system? To get information, because they've already gone through the process, they've gone through the transition. And maybe you can learn a little bit from the bumps in the road that they've had, or maybe other districts, maybe in Monroe County or another area that would be similar size and scope to our school as a guide point to kind of walk us down. Because when you're always one of the first ones out of the gate, you may think you've hit all the pieces, and then maybe you're thinking back, "Oh, I missed this." So, maybe we can learn from them as we move forward.
That, that would be the plan?
Obviously, we, we want to, obviously, we can be more aware of our goal or something like this. Obviously, this is coming from the students, but yes, they would, uh, I'm sure the school leaders can reach out to Williamsville school leaders as well. So, yes, I would envision that as a target plan.
Anyone else? Okay, so, Ryan and Casey, I can't thank you enough for coming back and sharing this with us. And of course, you're, you're passing the torch to current students, just as Connor Carrow and those on the SSAC have, had passed it to you. So, we look forward to hearing more about it. What, what I'm gonna ask Dr. Valley to do is just explain a little bit about how this is set up and how this transition would work and how this process would continue. But, you know, before you leave, Ryan and Casey, can you just share with us what you're going on to do now?
Guess I'll go first. I'm going to Geneseo, um, this upcoming fall. For a while, I was undecided, but I think I'm going towards education. And, um, yeah, that's, that's about it for me for now.
I am also going to Geneseo to major in psychology and pre-law.
I just, just in closing, uh, obviously, Lancaster prides itself with student leaders, and, uh, these two do nothing but show you why. Look at how prepared they were with questions. They know, they've done their research, they met with me over the, um, last six months and even last week during their break. So, I, I just want to applaud them, and, uh, obviously, Geneseo is very fortunate to receive these two, uh, this young lady and young gentleman. So, thank you, thank you so much, guys.
Yeah, and just so everyone understands, and, uh, I've talked to Ryan and Casey about this and, um, Mr. Marchioli, um, there is no formal board policy, uh, rank, class rank, uh, policy or, uh, LAUDA. and Mr. Marchioli, there is no formal board policy, rank, class rank policy, or Laude policy, or anything like that. The reality is, is this is a student subcommittee of an SSAC group of student leaders, which, who I meet with once a month, and they are a fantastic, excellent bunch, and we have subcommittees on environmental issues, and tree planting, and recycling, and all kinds of really great things, and it's been a pleasure working with you this year. So this is just one of many. At this point, it really was a very important piece of the student leaders coming to the Board of Education to solicit help and support. If the Board of Education hated it, we don't go any further, but it seems like we have at least a green light to move forward. What does moving forward mean? It means that my administration, along with Mr. Marchioli and so many others, will go and do that homework for you. Getting all that, like Mr. Davenport mentioned, you know, talking to, you know, administration teachers, student leaders, et cetera, at Williamsville and places all over the country who have moved in that direction, and we will come up with a very clear and articulate plan on how to, in our opinion, move forward if we want to move forward. But I so appreciate you coming and giving this thing, because it really has to be about the students. And you represent the students. Vice President and President of Student Union represent the student body of more than two thousand, actually more, if you include all, you know, six thousand students, because you are representing kindergarten as well, but six thousand students, and you coming and saying this is important to us, and this is why, that was an important first step. So thank you very much, and we'll move forward and eventually come back with the Board, to the Board of Education with a concrete, specific plan like we always do. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, thirteen point O, moving to regular session. Fourteen point O is correspondence. Does anyone from the board have any correspondence that they received that they'd like to mention? Fifteen point O is approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from our June twenty-fourth meeting?
Six.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Sixteen point O, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
We have to last, so we'd like to welcome two of our members, and that's what we'll go. We look forward to the eighteen point school year being as positive a relationship with the Board of Administration and all of that, so.
Thank you, Mr..
Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, seventeen O, board reports. Anyone from the board have anything they'd like to report on? Thank you. Eighteen point O, old business. Anyone have any old business they'd like to discuss?
Would you? Board retreat.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay, so, yes, thank you. The board retreat, just to hammer down a date, so there were two dates, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth of September, that we had available to us. And I know Mr. Sage says the twenty-eighth was not good for you, and Mrs. Fetter, you said the fourteenth wasn't as good for you. Now, can you make the twenty-eighth at all? And Mr. Jackson, were either of those dates?
I thought you said the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth.
No, it was the twenty-eighth and the fourteenth, so.
Okay. So.
Is the fourteenth, is the fourteenth okay for you?
I can, I'm just traveling that whole week and coming back on Friday, and so.
Okay.
Like, I'll be gone Sunday and Friday, so.
I see.
Hopefully not, but I can.
Okay.
If they're worse than the rest.
Okay.
It's the twenty-eighth, but.
And you have, you have a wedding?
I'll be in Boston.
Okay, so.
We can do it.
And we can accommodate you for, you know, if you come late or leave early for family time, that's always doable, too, so. So everyone else is good with the fourteenth, then? Okay? Mrs. Janik, so that seems to be the date? Thank you. Any other old business? Okay, nineteen point O, new business. Nineteen point one, personnel items. Nineteen point one point one, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Nineteen point two, education items. Nineteen point two point one, could I have a motion to approve the Committee on Special Education's report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Nineteen point two point two, Committee on Preschool Special Education, could I have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point O, business and financial items. Twenty point one, could I have a motion to accept the financial reports?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point two, could I have a motion to accept the food service operating reports from May two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point four, contract with Premier Consulting, could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point five is a contract with the YMCA, could I have a motion to accept that contract?
Hello.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point six, we have our amended tire bid, could I have a motion to accept that amended bid?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved.
Can you go back to twenty point three?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did I skip that? You didn't catch that, that I?
Sorry, brother.
Twenty point three, sorry, everyone. Twenty point three is an amended Buffalo Construction Corporation proposal, could I have a motion to accept that amended proposal?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. So we got twenty point six, we're on to twenty point seven. Okay, twenty point seven is two thousand nineteen twenty school lunch program prices, could I have a motion to accept the program prices?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point eight is the two thousand nineteen twenty twenty food service operating budget, could I have a motion to accept that operating budget?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point nine is a contract with UNS Services, could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point ten is a contract with LJR for a storage unit, and twenty point eleven is also a contract with LJR for facilities use. Could I have a motion to accept both of those together?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty twelve is our construction change orders, could I have a motion to accept the change orders?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point thirteen and twenty point fourteen are surplus equipment and surplus books, could I have a motion to accept those reports?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point fifteen is a contract with Olmsted Center for Sight, could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point sixteen is a contract with Ellen Cool, LCAT, and Sound Transformations Music Therapy Services, could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twenty point seventeen is a contract with Kathleen and Pollock, could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved. Second.